Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience and understanding around having to reset the meeting. This is the Hideout Utah Town Council Regular Meeting and Public Hearing, rescheduled public hearing of August 11, 2022. This meeting is electronically. There will no anchor site due to the various virus challenges that face the public health. Okay. I need to call this meeting to order as well. And take the role. Bob Daleberg.
Here.
Ralph Severini.
Here.
Carol Hazelton.
Here.
You, Chris Byer.
Here.
And Sherri Jacobs.
Here.
You. Okay, we have oral. Good news. First item of discussion, which is scheduled for 6:30 PM, notice for 6:30 PM was a continued public hearing. Or consideration and possible approval of the claim Phase Four Final Plot Application. Bigger. Thomas, would you be willing to take us through this?
Yes, I would. Thanks, Mayor. So this is for the final phase of claim. The claim subdivision that was preliminarily approved in December of 2017. At that time, there was an understanding there would be three, four, or five phases for this project, and they would each come back to the Planning Commission and Council for approval at that time. So this is Phase Four, and this will be the final phase. There were 88 allowed units for this claim subdivision, and this final phase will include two components. If you, Mayor, or Alicia, if you could go down to the next slide, you'll see. Go down to the map. That might be the easiest way. Yeah, if you take a look at the map, you'll see that there are two components to Phase Four. This finishes out the kind of the northern end and the northeast end and the northwest end as well. That would be 14 units and eight units.
For his party? Thank you.
So that would be for 22 units total. That's what this Phase Four would be an approval for. If you scroll down just a little bit more, you'll note that the total project area is about 59 acres. About 43 of those acres would be preserved as open space untouched land and part of a trail system that would be completed by the applicant. If you scroll down just a little bit further, you'll see that, again, this preliminary subdivision came through and was approved back in 2017. And so since that time, back in November of 2020, the zoning ordinance was changed by the community. And so this is required to meet the new zoning ordinance. It does in most instances. The only section of the ordinance that this will not be able to meet is the Standards and Monotony Clause. Road widths, et cetera, will be met. So we've been working with the applicant. And, you know, after completing two and two slash three phases, it doesn't make a lot of sense to start making big changes to the design. There are subtle changes already in each component of each building, but they cannot meet the full ordinance. And so we've been working with them through the Design Review Committee and have come up with three variations for color palettes, as well as a recommendation that they kind of fluctuate or change articulation. Some of the heights along each of the different building components that are yet unbuilt. And so where typically they have a relatively standard height line, they're going to work to increase some, and they may require a variance for that. But they will need a variance to deviate from the monotony clause anyway. And so potentially to get a variance to add four feet of height is something that we're working with them to coordinate. If you scroll down to the next page, we've got some site plan requirements in there. These are similar to what you all saw just beyond these photos, actually, Alicia. We've got some site plan requirements. And we've got some plan requirements for landscape, et cetera. Those will all relate to what we've done with regard to Phase One, Two, and Three. And so this did go to the Planning Commission. They favorably recommended it to the council as presented with the conditions outlined. So really, if there are any questions by council, please, please direct them to me. I also know that Chris Ensign with Solsys Development is also on this call, so he can answer specific development questions.
Hey, Thomas, this is Chris. I'll start. I was interested to see that four-foot height variance that would need to be discussed. Can you explain how that came about?
So that came about in an attempt to actually meet the monotony clause. Right now, the elevations are pretty much the same for each of the four unit structures. And so on just a few, I think we have identified maybe six or seven units that would be raised up slightly, about four feet, to start to give a little bit of articulation difference. Primarily, these would be located on the backside of the project, so as not to impede views. We're working with Chris on that right now. But again, it just gives a little bit of articulation change in the complex.
Is it in, where in that circle in the back?
Actually, there's, I think, seven of them, and they're in different locations throughout the development. Some would be primarily in the in the backside, on the kind of the east side of that top circle, which would be the northeast side. There are a few tucked down in the development that are at elevation significantly lower than the buildings behind, so they should not impede views. We're doing that study with Chris Ensign right now, just to ensure that that is the case. But it's, I think, seven of the 88 units, I think, would have the slight variation.
Okay, that answers my question. And and you explained the why. The why is for kind of a variation, or is it?
It's for articulation variation, and it's a, it is a step to achieve the intent of the monotony clause. They cannot get to full alignment with the monotony clause per the new code, but this gets them a little bit closer. And the other, the other component to the DRC review was that there would be, instead of one color palette for all 88 units, for all of the buildings that make up the 88 units, there will be three different color palettes. So it'll give a little bit of variation. Again, it's a step to achieve the, the goal of the monotony clause, but it doesn't quite get there. So a variance is going to be required from the strict interpretation of that ordinance line, anyway.
All right, thanks. I guess you answered my question. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, Thomas, where do you want to go? Questions, other questions for?
If council has any other questions, certainly let me know. That it is a public hearing, so we should open it up for public input. The only other thing I guess is that the, the stock piling of soil, actually, so everybody knows, is actually going to the Wolf property that is just to the, what is that? To the northwest a little bit. So yeah, you see that in the photo. And there were requirements in place for the reseeding, the revegetation of that, to ensure the protection of the creek that flows below that. And so all of those requirements are still in place and have to be addressed as part of this Phase Four of the total of the.
That's actually been met. Been met, Thomas. They, that's actually been hydro seeded, been topsoiled and hydro seeded. That whole piece of dirt around the Wolf property.
Okay, so.
Can I interrupt for a second? I know we talked about more than just hydro seeding. Last time, when we talked about the dirt pile, we talked about, you know, needing some kind of landscaping as well, because even hydro seeding, it's not going to look the same. It's going to stick out and look weird against the rest of the, you know, natural landscape that has other types of plants in it. So is that what we settled on? Because I don't recall that.
I don't know at the top of my head, Chris, what's in the, what's in the agreement of what the stabilization means? We'd have to do the research on that.
And I think that when Solsys Development came before you all for Phase Three, I think there was an agreement that, of course, once the, once all of the soil was located in this area, that it would be sloped, so that it was less than a one-to-one slope, and that it would be hydro seeded, and then some additional landscaping would go in and ensure the growth of that landscaping before any of the drainage protection measures were removed for the creek area. And I think that Chris Ensign is, is on this call. I think he could confirm that, and I think that that is still part of the agreement for Phase Four as well.
Chris, if you're here, you're welcome to make a comment.
Hi, everyone. Good to be with you tonight. You know, I didn't, I was curious if we could scroll up. I certainly remember the conversation as well. We have topsoiled it. Thanks, Mayor. We have topsoiled and seeded. I'm just trying to recall. We're happy to work through whatever's needed to do up there still. Kind of the same position as last time. I thought we put some language to it. I don't know if that's here in this anywhere, but I think we recorded it with our plat. Do you recall that, Thomas? We kind of included a document that gave some direction.
I think you did provide that, and I'm trying to remember. If Ryan had that last door, let me just see something. I'm looking at the resolution, actually. Give me one second. Yeah, it's actually part number 18 in the resolution. If, if you wanted to scroll down to that, it's under the Conditions of Approval Number 18 at the bottom. There you go. This is what was noted. A SWIP plan would be submitted for Phase Four. No slope, succeed a one-to-one grade. You guys can take a look at that. I won't read through it, but that is, does that make sense? I think that's what you are referencing, Chris, right?
Yes, yep. Do we feel that still articulates what we are hoping to do?
I think so. And yeah, council, please, please confirm if it's different.
We're happy to continue doing that, making sure we can get that as good as we can, so that it does. I mean, eventually it will, for sure, but anything we can do to boost it along the way and make sure that the erosion, for sure, is top priority. And then aesthetics would be second, certainly. But yeah, we want it to blend in, and it will in time. You know, you kind of look across the whole valley out there. You see cuts and fills, just kind of part of the nature of the process. But yeah, certainly, we want to do our part, and it will return at some point as well.
Okay, great. Thanks for pointing that language out. So essentially, it says that there'll be native vegetation planted there. It's going to aesthetically blend in with the local landscape over time as things grow in. And that Thomas gets to review and approve that landscape plan. That's what it says, and okay, it's there, so.
There's your answer, Chris.
We end up with, end up over time with something that blends in. So, you know, it doesn't look like it was just a soil repository. And that it, you know, fits in, and because it's very prominent when you're driving on the highway. You can't help but look at it right now. I would hope one day, that's not where your eyes are drawn. Your eyes are instead drawn to the beautiful landscaping and entryway to claim. Right, Chris?
Yes.
People are like taking a look, oh, wow, that's a cool place to live. What a beautiful entrance. That's what we want them to be looking at.
We were thinking. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mine was not a very funny joke. I was going to say kind of like a Hollywood sign, but hideout that we could put along that whole bank, so everyone knew where they were arriving, but I'll hold my joke, sorry.
We are going to get a hideout sign eventually.
Well, I've got a great location for you.
Mayor, can I just jump in for a second? So I reviewed this, the resolution and the staff report quite closely, just as we're getting more and more methodical about reviewing plats and having conditions of approval. And so I just want to make sure that Chris is aware that there are changes what was presented to Planning Commission, and that hopefully he had the opportunity to look at this carefully, because this will be the law of the land if it is passed. So I don't think there's, yeah, I, all the conditions would lean from either the staff report, excuse me, or the MDA and things that the Planning Commission said, that type of thing. So nothing should be really of a surprise, but I just wanted to bring it up to make sure that he's had an adequate time to read through it and knows that that, that those are the condition.
Well, I do appreciate you bringing that up. I have not seen it, so I don't know what changes have been. I don't recall a lot from Planning Commission or anything that would be new here. So could I get a redline version that I could review?
Yeah, I can send you a redline version so that you can see it, although the action is going to happen tonight unless you want to continue it, so you have that opportunity to review.
Well, I wouldn't want to approve something that I have not reviewed. Like I said, I have never been given that. So what, if anything, I'm going to propose that we go back to the original if I haven't reviewed it to, to, I mean, we scheduled this for this tonight.
Well, this was, it was part of the packet, and I apologize if we didn't send it to you. So I'm sorry about that. That's probably pretty frustrating. The things that are added, I don't think are anything out of left field, but it's some stuff like making sure that we have proof from GSSD that your impact fees have been paid for both sewer and water. There's a section about dedication of water that was in the MDA that I made sure was in here. There's something about making sure the open space is a conservation easement. That's the last one. You have to record the CC laws. So it's those type of things. They all came from other documents. Nothing came out of whole cloth.
Well, if we've got them elsewhere, could we pull them for tonight then and just leave them where they are? And then we can continue on with something so that we didn't schedule this and.
Well, if you'd like, we could continue it to the next meeting, so you'd have time.
That's not my hope. That's not my hope.
Yeah, I would not recommend that the town not include all these conditions, because part of why we've been trying to streamline this and have everything in one place is to be transparent, so that you don't, when it comes time to record your plat, that you're not saying, wait, there was something in the MDA? I haven't looked at that MDA since 2019 when we signed it. And, you know, and then you're taken aback, or staff forgets to look at that. So the idea is just to put everything in one place. I mean, I guess you could ask, if you wanted to look at it while we're sitting at the meeting, you could ask the mayor if he would be willing to postpone.
Yeah, I mean, we can certain, we can certainly, you know, table it briefly, Chris, while you have some time to look and, you know, come back to it later in the meeting. I have other things on the agenda we can cover and then revisit. I think we should do the public hearing portion and then come back.
Yeah, do you want to send it over now? I'll see if I can get my opinion on it well.
Polly, can you send it?
Yeah, I just need to, yeah, I need to find it. I will send it. I think I have Chris's info, so hold off. It'll take me just a few minutes to find it.
And Polly, if you have any questions, shoot it my way, and I can send it as well, or give you his information.
Alicia, I mean, it's here. It's in the document, so Alicia has a copy. She can send it.
Yeah, I can just send the whole packet. I've got it up right now.
Is it red?
Send them all back?
No, it's not. But you do have, I mean, you should be able to pull the actual packet off of the website with this, so you can see the clean copy. Give me a few minutes to find the redline version and just make sure that it's motioned that I can turn over.
All right, Chris, we'll start with that. We'll revisit it towards the end. If you're still not comfortable, we'll work something out. All right. But this is a public hearing item for, so I'm going to open the floor for a public comment on the claim for subdivision. Which, again, as, as stated earlier, is a part of a larger preapproval. And this is just the last phase of the project with minimal differences through the whole, the whole element here. Okay, so anybody, there's a hand up. Carol Thomas? Let's see if we can get you up here. You should be able to unmute, Carol.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick comment about the claim development. Having been out on the water, on the Jordan now, in the last couple of days, I think that the articulation change is a great idea, so that all of the units don't look so uniform. So I'm, I totally support that decision. And of course, the additional landscape, anywhere in open space, we can put in, that can be put in to eventually make the project blend in, I think, is a great idea. And I would totally support that as well. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from public? Okay, then I'll close the public input. See anything else on claim. We'll move on to general public input.
Mayor, before you move on, can I just ask another question about? I'm looking at the ordinance. Can you just point out where the height variance and the height and the monotony clause variances are in here?
Yes. That is under the Design Review Committee line. Give me one second. I'm looking for it.
Tell me where to go, Thomas, and I'll go to it.
Okay, it is under number 11 in the Conditions of Approval.
Okay.
Do you see that, Chris?
We do. I'm just reading it.
Hey, Thomas, Ralph here. I know, you know, you you and I and Glenis went over this, you know, the height, and, and you had that plot map of the units to, to address Chris's and maybe anyone's. You had all the units kind of identified that would change height. So do you have that? I don't see that as part of the submission here.
That's, that wasn't part of the submission per, that was for DRC. I can certainly pull that up if you guys want me to. It's still something that we're working through. And after the DRC meeting, I contacted Chris and let him know that generally the DRC was in favor of that, the articulation and the colors, and that I, that we needed confirmation that we wouldn't have any impact on view. So he's going to work with his civil engineer or architect to ensure that. And I don't think that analysis is yet done, because that was just last week that we actually reviewed that via DRC. But he is going to do that and ensure the exact foot, height footage that needs, the variance is probably going to be four, maybe a little bit more, maybe five, for those seven, eight units. And so he's got to do that analysis and then bring that back as an application.
Okay, so that, is that a separate application?
It is. That would be a variance application for that. So DRC reviewed it, made the recommendation in support of, but that would have to go as a variance application to the Administrative Law Judge.
Okay, well, I mean, you and I and Glenis are at the DRC, so to speak. So, you know, the three of us went over for an hour. But, you know, to address Chris's concern and maybe anyone else's, at least that should, you know, useful to show it, because there was like one unit that, you know, seemed to have the most issues around whether it blocked views. But as you were saying during that, during our call, that, you know, it's a fairly steep slope. So just to, you know, maybe that's a good way to share with everyone else what's going on with the, you know, getting rid of, you know, addressing the monotony clause with those seven units and the color, color changes.
I'd like to suggest, Ralph, that since it's coming back through the process, that we'll have a chance to see it before. So it doesn't make sense to me to look at something that may change. But it's up to you guys. Thomas, I don't, you have, we don't have any sketches of it anyway, do we, yet?
I, I have the, I have the initial preliminary sketch that shows the locations for the articulation change.
And the only reason I'm going over this is because, you know, it's come up here in the meeting. So do we, you know, do we address it here, or do we address it somewhere else, depending upon how we approach this, I guess?
Well, Thomas, I've stopped sharing, so if you want to share that, you're welcome to.
And just to clarify on my end, maybe I understood the process differently. I understood that the variance went a whole different path, not back through the city. I'm, I'm great with whatever, but I just heard someone say.
Goes through a different path, but.
You could see it again, and I don't think you will, if, if I understood it correctly.
Chris, just so you're clear, it doesn't come back to City Plan, the Planning Commission or Town Council. It goes to, for a variance application, normally to a Board of Adjustment, a Board of Zoning Appeals. We have an Administrative Law Judge, because we're small enough. We're a small enough community that we're, don't need Board of Appeals. And so it would go to Administrative Law Judge, that application. You're right. It doesn't come back to either Planning Commission or Town Council. This is the.
So Thomas, to just answer my question about that then, and how do we control the maximum variance, height variance? If it goes to the Communication of Law Judge, and I mean, how does that work?
The recommendation from the Planning Commission and the recommendation for Planning Commission was for about four, maybe five feet of articulation change. And so that's what we looked at with the Design Review Committee. So if you take a look at this diagram right here, you can see there's three different things on here. One is the. One is the three color changes that are proposed, the variations, different color palettes. And then the locations up here where you see these small black circles, those would be the units that would be tested for a slightly higher height allowance. Instead of the 35 feet, it could go up to 39 feet. And so that's what would be presented for the variance.
And we don't have to do that. Chris, they're, you know, they're doing that at our behest because we want to try and break up the, the landscape, if you will, of the buildings. But if that bothers the council, we can just say build, build your standard units.
You could say that, build your standard units and just utilize maybe the three paint color patterns. This, this is certainly up to town council, yeah.
It would be helpful to see a drawing of what, you know, one of the buildings that has the circle in it, what that looks like. I, I, you know, I'm trying to envision it. It's just a little hard.
Here, let me bring one up.
You know, Chris, as we were going over, Glenis, myself and Thomas, the one, the only unit that we saw in the front row, you know, in the blues, seemed to be potentially, you know, blocking a view, but the rest of it all made sense because they were in the background. And it, you know, it continued to work the monotony clause in a better way.
So this is one of the original buildings. And then if you had some articulation change, it's, it's, it's minimal. It's, you know, four feet on say an end unit here. Let me show you another. Maybe if you're taking a look at from this angle, you would see this. So I'll go back to before, after. And then it down here, before, after. Let me go back.
I have to say, I don't actually see an improvement. I see a difference and then I worry about what's behind it that might be impacted by the building in front of it being four feet higher. So that's why I'm, you know, hesitating a little bit over that because it's, it seems, it doesn't seem to, yeah, it, it, it might try to address the monotony clause, but it doesn't really. And, and it can have the potential downside of blocking something behind it that we can't really understand the way this diagram and this flat picture is. So I have to say, you know, when you show the before and after, Tom, and the before looks, looks right. Maybe I'm so used to seeing the claim buildings as they are now. It, that, that extra piece, it doesn't make any sense to me personally. That's how, that's how I feel based on what, you know, you just presented. So
No, that's fair.
Twist ourselves in, you know, around on something like this. Your claim's already partially built. We, we accept that. We accept that. You know, the monotony clause probably isn't going to work a claim. Yeah, that's how I feel.
And it's cer, it's certainly up to council. If you guys want to, you know, want to, this was an attempt to get to what the monotony clause actually wanted. And you'll note that on this drawing, the black circles are the locations for that change, just to break up roof lines. You know, we've had concerns in the past with regard to kind of the, the linear height components of different developments of the shoreline or other developments. And so this is an attempt to actually start to get a little bit of articulation. It's subtle. It really is. No doubt about it, right? Where these are located, these black circles were designed to not interfere with view lines. They're all along either the back or in an area that doesn't have a building behind it. The only one that we really discussed at design review committee and with Chris was to make sure the, the one closest to the entrance, was that going to be in the way? The slope there is probably, I, we think it's great enough where that building is significantly lower because it's steep drop off to 248. But that was the one that we were really concerned about and wanted to make sure did not have any impact. But, you know, certainly this is, this is, it's up for discussion. It, it's really an attempt by solstice to get in line with the monotony clause.
You know, I want to applaud you guys for, for making an effort and trying to, trying to do that. Go ahead, Chris. I think you were going to talk.
I, I was just, you know, as we've kind of worked through this and I, I get it. I think it's a great clause to include. I, I really, I've expressed to Thomas a number of times that I really think we're better as a project for doing the color packages as we're planning. And this doesn't quite show it. Well, it does actually. You can kind of see how we designated each cluster of buildings, either three or four plex as the varying design color palettes, which I think enhances the project a lot. And I'm, I'm glad that this came up. We're going to incorporate it, not just in phase four. It actually will go through three quarters of the building because we have not done exteriors on, on three quarters of the building. So most of the project will have this positive impact. I will say we're happy to do this lift. I, I don't know the ROI on that four foot lift. But it's not something I'm going to make as a big thing on our end. We'll do it. I, I don't know, drive by or it potentially has more downside than it does an upside, but we're happy to do whatever. We're almost variance in, out of another code to meet the monotony code with height. So it's, like you said, maybe getting twisted around a little.
Right, exactly. Exactly. I, I'm more personally more con, concerned about the variance of height because of the impacts on views. We're all about views, right? And, and so, yeah, no, those are great comments, Chris, and I'm glad you so I'll, I'll take, I'll surrender the floor to another council member with my next question.
Um, I actually agree with Chris, I think, and both Chris's actually. I, um, I don't think that the lift really is going to make that much of a difference at claim. And I don't like the idea of a variance with height restriction as I think that's one of our more important variances. So I think the color changes will make enough of a difference there.
Thomas, if you, could you go back to the, the the base height treaty views along? So I mean, you, you, we have, those buildings are all stair stepped, if you will, anyway, without the raise. If you go back to, I mean, the, the facing this side of the building, the one on the right-hand side is, is, you know, higher up because of the topography than the left-hand side anyway. So it's not like it's a dead flat look. So, yeah, don't keep raising it because I'm trying to show what the base installation looks like for council's view. So the way this reads now, we have, we have, you know, desire for that variance, not just the color glare, not just the color palette, but the, but the height. If, if the majority of the council feels that it's not required, then it's not required. And we can sort that out.
You've heard from two of us, Mayor. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Well, figure it out when we vote. I mean, we're, we've got to get on with the, the next stuff. Polly, have you been able to send the red line to, to?
No, I don't have a version. I've texted Chris and he, I believe he's pretty computer savvy that he can you compare of the two documents from this packet and the planning commission packet. It's too difficult for staff to do it in the middle of the meeting while we're paying attention to other. Or at least it is for me.
A, and Chris, it's really the, Chris, inside, it's really the last six that you should really be looking at. There were just some real, somewhat clerical corrections to some of the ones prior to that, but really look at the last six or seven. And
And sorry, Polly, I didn't, I just saw that, that text. Why don't we do this? It would seem like either way, just so I don't feel rushed, let's go with what it is. If I need to come back because it somehow doesn't quite work, I come back. But we would have done that almost anyway at this point. So, and maybe it works just great and it can lines up with everything else.
Okay.
The worst case scenario, we're back again, but we had almost already planned that anyway, so.
Okay, that, that sounds terrific. That's a great idea. Thank you for being accommodating.
Okay. I'm going to, we close public input to close council input. And except for the height variance issue. So I guess I will poll the council on height variance because we have to change, either change the language or leave it as is. For the height, I think everybody's comfortable with color palette change. So really it's item 11 that we're looking to, so I've heard from Chris and Sherry both think it's okay as is. Not to, I'm sorry, the buildings are okay as originally designed and don't need the height variance. I'll need to hear from Carol and Ralph and Bob.
Hey, Phil, I can hear you better now. I'm in a better cell phone area. Hey, if you covered this previously, I apologize. But if we approve the height variance, how likely does that make it for future developers to press the issue to get the, uh, future height variances for future projects? I don't want to open up a can of worms right here. I don't have a problem with a one-off thing. This might be a better question for Polly. Are, are we, are we asking for trouble with this?
You know, variance is meant to be specific to the situation and should only be granted under unusual circumstances. And I think this one is quite unique in that it was initially passed when the code was different. And, you know, the developer has been willing to go with our new, you know, he is required to under the MDA. But he, I believe he had already started with his plans and whatnot. So I think this is a pretty unique situation. I don't know if Thomas has any more factual. But that being said, that, the, the variance would have to be analyzed by ALJ and be found to meet those conditions.
I mean, I think that's a great question, Bob. Regardless of the fact that, you know, that it's a specific instance, I can
We, we have another situation in hideout where we allowed some building to take place when we shouldn't have because we were trying to be supportive. And it's resulted in a huge mess for us because everybody else wants the same privilege, even though it's a unique situation. So I think there is risk, even though we can defend it. I think there is risk. It certainly can create noise.
Yeah, certain developers seem to be overly litigious and I'll leave it at that. I think we all know what we're talking about. So I, I have a little bit of trepidation right here. And I remember my own personal experience. I asked for a height variance in my house and they told me, uh, no, in not so polite words. But that's all I had. Thank you.
So I get, so Bob, does that mean you would, you would prefer not to have the height variance?
You know, I mean, what, what you proposed looked good. If, if our legal counsel thinks that we should be okay, I, I, I'm kind of leaning towards letting him have that. But again, you know, I do have those concerns, so.
Well, and I guess, you know, to clarify, it's, you're not deciding whether as part of this approval, I don't think the variance is being granted. Is it, is that it has to go to the ALJ? So he has that opportunity, which anybody does. So he would go through the same process that if council member Nadelberg wanted a height exception, you could have asked for a variance and it would have, it would have been up to a different body to determine if it was appropriate, if it met the criteria of a variance.
Well, I think we're talking about Polly is, is taking that language out of this document.
Right, so I mean
Just having to go to an ALJ. I mean, Chris, Chris Ensign is doing this at the behest of, of hideout. And so if, if the council feels that the behest of hideout is not going to benefit from having this height variance, I don't think he objects to not doing it.
Right, and, and just, and let me just add one more layer of complexity to this, but it'll ultimately come full circle and make this a little bit more simple, I'm hoping. Chris has to go before the ALJ to get a variance from meeting the monotony clause. He cannot meet the monotony clause, the way this is, the way this building is designed, the way this building, I'm sorry, the development has, 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 has gone forward. He can't meet the monotony clause. He's going to have more than six units that look very similar. And so he has to go for a variance from the monotony clause. I think that he does have a unique situation because he started a portion of his project where the ordinance changed and then of course the ordinance changed. So that is a variance that he has to pursue because he cannot meet the monotony clause as written right now. So that's one, in an attempt to try to get closer to the monotony clause, there's really kind of a second variance. And that is this small height variance to allow the articulation in a, in a, in a development that's already been designed. So if you had concerns about the latter, the height, he'll still go forward to the ALJ for the variance from the monotony clause. But if you have concerns about the second one, we could take that one out and he would just have the three color variation changes. And that would be his, his remedy to get as close as he can to the intent of the ordinance.
But I think, Thomas, if you went in with the, to the ALJ and said, you know, we talked about a height variance and the council was not supportive, that would take that element of
Well, if the council says if the council's not supportive, we wouldn't even go in with that, with that recommendation. It would just be Chris submitting.
But if the guy were to say, why don't you raise your roofs, you, we would be able to say, we had that discussion and council was not favorable.
That, that's true. Yeah. But if the council's not, if the council's not favorable toward the four feet, we'll actually take that out of the recommendation. Because, you know, right now, even if you said, go forward with the color changes and the, the slight articulation changes, there's not a guarantee that the X, the, that variance would meet the criteria, right? And so we're, we're, we're not guaranteed that the ALJ would award that variance. We suspect that there are unique circumstances, but it's not a guarantee.
Do you want more input from council members?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Carol, we got to move off this one way or the other, so.
Right, okay. My, my input is I don't have a problem with keeping the height as it is. I, if we, if we went through the variance, I had, I have a problem with that unit that is close to the highway that's on the end that could possibly have a blocked view. So that's, that was my concern. I don't want to see any height variance blocking anybody's view. But I'm fine with just not even having any variances for the height.
Ralph, you're on mute.
Yeah. It's, and, and Thomas, we went, you know, the three of us went over this last week or whatever it was.
We did.
And you know, actually, Carol, you almost sound exactly like I did in going through this, particularly for the one unit and how we dealt with that particular item. But that the, you know, overall, the rest of those seven, six out of seven provided some element of differentiation, so to speak, and added to the monotony. I thought it was a, I thought it was a, a good compromise as long as primarily we did not block any views. I think there's evidence here from Chris, you know, our Chris and from maybe Bob, that there could be also some, you know, other things that could leak into this in terms of how, you know, other developers might look at this as well. So definitely that was in the back of my mind as, as well. So I thought that was a great comment. And so I'm okay in either sense, just like Carol was. And so I could easily pass this and just say, no height variation. Let's go with the better, you know, let's stick with the color variations and move on. And Chris, Chris Ensign, I'm guessing that would work for you anyway, because there was a cost, the most, the most cost association is with the height change. So I, I guess you're not going to argue that point.
Okay, so it sounds to me like the, that we would, we will remove the height. When we, when we look to adopt the. Going the wrong way, I'm sorry. If we look to adopt a resolution, we'll adopt it, recognizing that in section eleven, we will remove the language associated with the height variation. That's what I will propose to, to vote on. Does it show up anywhere else, Thomas, besides section eleven?
I'm looking at it now and I, no, I don't think so. Nope, it's just noted in the report or discussion. And then in section eleven, it's noted, so I would change, I would take out the horizontal and vertical articulation changes. And just note color variation changes in number eleven in the resolution then. But also noting that variance is still required from the monotony clause.
Okay, so what I'm looking for is a motion. To adopt a resolution approving the claim based for subdivision located in Utah. With the modification to the height variation language as discussed earlier.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carol.
It was Sherry who moved.
Oh, it was Sherry, okay. Thank you, Sherry. Okay. Chris, how do you, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ralph, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bob, how do you vote?
I'm so sorry to do this to you. If I vote yes, am I voting in favor of allowing the height variance?
No, you're voting in favor of not allowing the height variance.
I vote yes.
Yes.
And Sherry?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Chris, you're in without a height variance, but you still get to do the, the appearance stuff at least. And you know, you go to the ALJ for the approval for the other part.
Sounds great. I'll continue through with Thomas. And Paulie, thanks. I did that reviewed and follow up, but most likely. It will all add up and will be great to go. So thank you, everyone.
Okay. Next on the agenda is general public input. This is the ability to, for the public attending the meeting to ask questions on items not listed on tonight's agenda. And again, the way you do that is by raising your hand. I see one hand up for Carol Thomas. Carol?
Oh, hi. So I, I know this is completely off the agenda, but it's something that I wanted to bring before the town council. Before things move further than they already have. I live at the, under the End Lot, the South Lot in Deer Waters, adjacent to Lakeview Estates. And my concern is there is a bike path that runs in front of my property. That will connect across Stargazer Circle and go up to Shoreline and Outlook. And I am not sure where that bike path and how it will connect. Because there is a lot that was created by an amendment in two thousand nineteen to the original Deer Waters. Platte that created a lot forty-one, that I understand is part of, owned by homes, homes. And to be developed as a half a house. As part of, included in a Deer Waters phase, I don't know. But what my concern is, is where will the path go? Especially now that Lakeview Estates is already under construction. There are two foundations already poured. And I would just like to bring this to the town council's attention that there is, there's going to be a road crossing. And if there's a house built. Is that going to be a safety issue where the path goes? I don't know if everyone is familiar with what I'm talking about, but there's clearly something that needs to be addressed here. And I would be in favor of perhaps, I don't know if it can be amended back to leave that as open space as it once originally was. I don't know if additional open space was provided in Deer Waters when that lot was created. So just something I'd like the town council to take into consideration. I'm not sure if anyone is familiar with where I'm talking about.
Oh, I certainly am. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask Thomas as our planner. To research that, that section that you're talking about and take a look at that and come back to council with a. A physician statement on whether or not he feels that's. An issue that we need to further pursue. And we'll get back to you on that as well.
Okay, that would be great. Just some idea of where that path is going to go would be, would be, would be great. I do appreciate that.
Mayor, are you proposing like an agenda item in a future meeting? That we would discuss and discussion item?
Yes, put it as a discussion item after Thomas reviews it and has a position to share.
Okay, that would be great. I'd really appreciate it.
I can do that. Carol, I'll be in touch. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Any other? Questions or sorry, input from, from the public? Okay. I'm gonna close.
I, I have a public input item. I just have gotten complaints from folks who live in Rustler about the. Stuff left on the side of the road on Longview. I think, I think assuming it was left by Rocky Mountain Power when they put the big power box in there. But there's pipes and, you know, cones and just junk left over there. It's been there for quite a while. So I've gotten a complaint about that and I just wanted to mention it in public input. I could have emailed Tim, but I didn't. I just wanted to mention that, that there are some things like that that are.
We'll get engineering to look at that. Where, where is that, Chris, again, please? Well, Tim, never mind. It's all right. Tim, you can reach out to Chris if you can't find this.
It's on Longview, on the way to Rustler, on the left. I'm sure Russell's where it is. He has to drive past every day.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I've seen it. Yep.
Yep.
Tim was on, and he's still on, so Tim, put it on your agenda.
Yep.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep, I'll take care of it.
Okay, thanks, Tim. I'll send you a photo. I think I took one like a couple of weeks ago when I was walking my dog.
All right. Close public input and let's move on. I, Tony, I have, I put a section in for updates. Because we have all these groups working and I thought the council should find out what's going on with them. Tony was hoping to be out of here, because he has an appointment tonight. And he was volunteered to go first for a quick update on the planning commission. Hopefully he can do it in the next two minutes, so we don't make him late. And we'll do a better job of getting an update from the planning commission. Less than an hour and a half into the meeting next time. The other thing I want to say before Tony goes is I want to thank Tony and the planning commission for all the hard work they did on the, the Boulders project. We, that was extensive amount of work and took a lot of time. And I personally am very appreciative as, as the rest of staff of all the work they did on that. So I just want to say thanks to the planning commission and all the great stuff they do for us. Tony, if you're still here, now's your two minutes of fame. Still here?
If you're not. Phil, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can, Tony. Thanks.
Okay, just to let the commission know, basically now that the, uh, Boulders project has finally sailed off into the sunset. There was nothing else on the calendar last month, so we adjourned the meeting to next, uh, we adjourned July's meeting. We have two issues coming forward. Number one is the plan for the thirty-eight cottage, cottages in the Deer Springs project. They're single family units. I just got the drawings this afternoon and looked at them. Other than that, I have nothing else on them. And the only other object we have on the calendar is a. Petition for lot number thirty-nine in Hideout off of Longview Drive. They want to actually shorten the entrance. To the, uh, off of Longview for the entrance to the driveway. So, and all I have is the map on that. But basically that's it. That's all we have going forward to give to you next month.
Thanks, Tony.
Yep.
Yeah, quick, quick questions for Tony, because he does need to go tonight. Otherwise he'll have to answer to his wife.
No question for Tony, but I just really delighted that Tony, that you're here and you're giving us. A, a quick synopsis and update because I can't, and very rarely make the planning commission meetings. And I don't get to listen to the YouTube very often either. So I really appreciate you being here.
Uh, no problem, Chris. If you ever have any questions, just give me a call or shoot me an email. I'll let you know what happened if he couldn't make the meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tony, Tony has agreed that we're gonna have somebody from the planning commission. Won't be him every, every week, but he's gonna get his guys to rotate or every month, let his guys to rotate.
Yeah, one person. So you can get to meet who's on, who else is on the commission if you haven't already.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Go have a nice dinner.
You're welcome. Yep. All right, have a good night.
So I just, I jumped into this quickly, council, because I didn't want to take any, I didn't want to lose Tony. I want him to have, he sat with us for an hour and a half. I want to give him a chance to say hello. But what I'm, it's new, this is new to our agenda, but I think we're gonna do this regularly. Just a couple of minutes from each of the groups that are working on various activities for the town. So the council stays up to date on what's going on. The next one on the list is community engagement. Sherry?
Yes, hi. So we had our first hideout event in June, which was a concert, and it was very successful. I think everybody had a really good time. I know Bob was there from the council and Ralph's wife was there. We had almost two hundred people. The next concert is tomorrow night, so I hope all of you will be there. We have about two, a little over two hundred tickets sold and twenty people that are going to pay at the door. Sorry, my husband's making noise in the background. So, and that one, we have more food trucks and games and things going on. I have a really great committee that has worked really hard and volunteered a lot of their time on these events. We'll have one more event in September, which will be a free movie night slash food drive. So I think it's people having a good time getting together in hideout. So I hope you all be there.
Hey, Sherry? Am I on mute? No, no, well, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, we, we had talked about like t-shirts and hats and stuff.
Oh, yeah, we actually sold, we had, we sold about a thousand dollars worth of merchandise at the last concert. And we have more for this one as well. We've got hats and t-shirts and people really love them. So that was popular as well, and it seemed to be a good place to sell them. And then whatever's left, I'll leave at Town Hall. Because people called me after to try to buy some. And so I can send them there to buy them. But I can, next time, have a sample for everyone to see.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if we're gonna provide this stuff, I think maybe we want to actually go a step further and advertise that it's available. Hopefully, it's a revenue, it's a revenue stream for the committee. And it'd be great that you could say we're gonna place orders, you know, once a quarter or whatever, so let us know. Once a month or whatever you have a frequency.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea. We'll see how the sales go and what we have left over, and then we can maybe advertise them on the website. Also, Rocky Mountain Power gave us about twenty-five hundred dollars towards community events, which was really nice. So that meant our last event after ticket sales and merchandise sales only cost a little over a thousand dollars for the entire event. So I'm hoping that eventually our events will be self-funding. So we won't need that budget line item.
That'd be great. Hey, council, any other questions, any questions for Sherry? And maybe next time, Sherry, you can also let everybody know who the committee is.
Yes, I can give you all of their names. I can tell you that now, if you want.
Sure, quickly.
Well, Marnie Micah, Anne Bloom Quest, Lauren Kineman, Valerie Quibado. I can't pronounce her name. Gary Dixon, Greg Lake, and Danielle Matt Tucci. They've all been wonderful. And we have also other volunteers from the community that are coming with to help set up and take tickets and things.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. And just for the councils aware, hats off to our Public Works, Works team. Because there's, these things are being currently held at the Public Works area. And the guys are working hard to try and accommodate that while still managing to maintain our infrastructure.
And Jan and Alicia have been a huge help as well.
Thanks, Sherry. Ralph? EDC?
Yeah, Phil, yeah, first, first thing is I did not abandon my wife to attend the last session or the, the last concert. Sherry, I was out of town on business, but I plan on being there tomorrow if the weather holds out. I saw.
Yeah, I know. I don't know what we're gonna do if it rains.
Yeah, potentially some, some rain. So good question is, what happens when it rains? You know, do you post something to that effect? If we got a thunderstorm or something like that during this time?
Well, right now it's just showing the rain ending at five o'clock, but it keeps changing. And honestly, I didn't think we'd have this issue in Utah. I had it a lot when I was planning events in Florida, like every day. But here, I think at this point, it's too late to really postpone it. So we're just going to have to hope for the best and hope that it doesn't, it's supposed to rain today and it hasn't. So it might just be some dark clouds and hopefully everybody will bring umbrellas and ponchos. I went to a concert in the rain at Redwood Gardens and it was a lot of fun, so. Bring sweaters and ponchos.
Can we, can we move on, please, to EDC and?
Yeah, so, yeah, I know you are. But since it was tomorrow, I thought I, I just chimed in there. Yeah, so the EDC has been meeting weekly on Mondays. The EDC includes Jan, myself, and then Scott Davis, Chris Duper. And Katie, who's on, you know, shared the budget before. So Katie Craig and, and Scott are all really super qualified in the, in this area of business finance. And, and the investment side. So like I said, we've been meeting almost every Monday, Jan and Katie Correct. And we, you know, some of the, some of the areas that we've been reviewing. Obviously, we've been looking at the economics of the Sausman property, both during the period of the Boulders submission. As well as potentially new opportunities around that or, and other areas of town that we could bring in some commercial. And then most recently, we've had a couple of meetings with Rob. Uh, most recently, we've had a couple of meetings with Rob Sant, who has been preparing a number of kind of almost pro forma budgets and and projections. Uh, and what ifs around the MIDA, using MIDA as a, as a funding mechanism for future development as well. So I'd suggest at some point, we could uh have a deeper dive into some of that, but that's really what we've been doing for the, I'm saying probably the last six weeks. That's it, uh, Primaya.
Thanks, thanks, Ralph. Very good. Chris, Post?
All right, thanks for the Post Committee. For those of you that don't know, Kathleen Hopkins is our chairperson and keeps us organized. Uh, we have John Hopkins, Thomas Eddington, Jan McCosh, Mary Freeman, Rachel Cooper, and myself. We meet. Uh, almost, we meet every month on the third Tuesday. Uh, we did meet in July, on July nineteenth. Uh, we made some progress. We've been trying to uh get ourselves included in the Wasatch County Trail Master Plan. So Thomas had. Provided GIS mapping um to MAG in order to to help us accomplish our goal of getting into that master plan. And he was also meeting with Doug Smith subsequent to our last meeting, but we are trying to. You know, get into the MAG Regional Implementation Plan as well, so that we um can uh get dialed in there and have potential. Um, you know, sources of 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 funding and also, you know, ensure we've got these regional connections that we're seeking. Also, uh, we were contemplating trying to meet with Chris Ensign regarding getting a uh plan together for the claim trail network. But we decided to postpone that since there's so much going on over there. Um, and so we're going to revisit that, I think, later. Uh, before the end of the year, and then potentially, we're gonna find out if we can try to get a design going, perhaps sometime next spring to to start. Figuring out what that trail network could look like. Um, we're also trying to reach the Department of Wildlife Resources. Regarding underpasses for wildlife, because we had had that discussion a few months ago. We want to be um better prepared. Next time we have um perhaps another proposal come to the town regarding uh the Saltman property or there, you know, thereabouts or any other development. Where we we would like to be better prepared to 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 know what we want in in the future and try to, you know, ask for the right things. Um, to be able to figure out a way to cross, somehow cross uh Highway two forty-eight. Perhaps underneath the highway. Um, but there are a couple of bulges there. We have Dead Man's Gulch, we have Bone Hollow, and then we have another gulch further down called. Um, can't remember. So uh, we just want to be a little bit better prepared for that. So that that was pretty much what we talked about in the last meeting. We're just trying to keep moving forward to get recognized as part of the whole regional planning effort.
Thank you, Chris. Carol H. Transportation, I know that you just started, so.
Right. But I, I have been to two meetings. Uh, last month, I went to um the MAG meeting, which was all about transportation. It was mostly UDOT, and um they requested that we give them a list of um. Things that we wanted. Uh, I was there with Jan, and she and I both submitted lists of things that we thought were important. Um, for transit and transportation and highways and roads. So we gave them the list, and so they have it. I don't know what they're gonna do with it. Um, but at least they know that we do have requests in. Um, and then yesterday, Jan and I met with Carolyn Rodriguez, who is in charge of High Valley Transit. And um it turns out that really High Valley Transit doesn't um service us. They did give us a suggestion um that if we wanted service, that we go with microservice. Which costs sixty-five dollars a vehicle hour, and we would contract with them, and that would give us um small minivan service into Park City. Uh, they said it would definitely be more affordable than having a uh stop on their fixed route that comes from Camas and goes into Park City. Or vice versa, Park City into Camas. They do pass us, but they said that it really creates a problem if they have to stop and hide out. Um, that, and we also have no parking, so their suggestion was to use microservice. Um, let's see, if we work anything out with UDOT to get UDOT to do anything, Carolyn said that um. We, they want funding from Hideout, so we talked about that very briefly. Um. Let's see, what else do I have down? Oh, the big thing is if you have been reading the paper or listening to KPCW. There is um an agenda item for the Park City Council to approve. Uh, parking and bus service from Park City Transit to Richardson Flat. That would be Park City, not um High Valley Transit. But Park City is holding firm that they're not going to do it unless they get financial support from the resorts. Because they feel that the people who would use Richardson Flat Parking Lot would be either, would be mostly employees of the two ski resorts in town. Um, we are setting up another meeting with Park City Transit, so at the end of the month, um I have to get with Jan and give her the dates that are good. But um we do hope to meet with them and see if there's anything we can work out. We're kind of in the middle of. Of High Valley Transit and Park City Transit, so we have to figure out who we could work with. And if we feel it's important to get some kind of transportation into Park City, we did stress that it would take a lot of our cars off the highway. Um, and we also discussed possible stoplights on two forty-eight. That's more a UDOT situation. Uh, both at the entrance to Hideout and Ross Creek, uh more turn lanes, and we also talked about underpass, overpass. Um, for pedestrians and also wildlife bridges. And the last thing we talked about was um it working with Post. Is there any potential to have a pedestrian walkway along two forty-eight to tie in with the trails? So those are the things we're still working on, and I have.
Carol, this is Chris. It sounds like we should do a joint meeting between, you know, two committees and, you know, start working through some of this stuff because it sounds like we have some of the same objectives.
Right, I agree. Um, since we are a new committee, I have one member of my committee from Planning Commission, that's Rachel. And um I'm looking for more members so we can spread out some of the work. So if any of you know um. Any people that live at Hideout that would be like to be on this new transportation committee, please let me know.
Chris, I cross over to uh the transportation and the Post Committee, so I can, I can be that critical link should it come up.
Okay, thanks, Jan. And also, I, I just have one other comment. It it removed me from the Infrastructure Committee. Um, I am willing to continue to serve on infrastructure until you can get somebody to replace me because I have been out enough for like a year and a half. So I don't want to just abandon it.
I'm, I'm moving it to Tim. That's what you see on the screen here.
Oh, okay. Oh, there. Okay, great. Okay.
Hey, Carol, just a quick comment. Um, I love the idea of microtransit servicing the Deer Mountain Affordable Community. We've talked about that. Years ago, that it's great that there's a commuter bus service, but not everybody that lives here is a commuter. They had, they need like special. Uh, so I'm, I'm quite interested in hearing that uh sixty-five dollars per hour. Uh, for through High Valley Transit is, if for a microservice, kind of a contract, sounds really interesting. I think we should just take a little closer look at that.
But that would be for our side of the highway, Chris, for the people that live in our our side of highway. Because they do get serviced by High Valley Transit already in the big bus.
Yeah, sure, but the big bus only comes, let's say, three or four times in the morning and three or four times in the evening.
Right.
Work hours of many people. They work, you know, they go to work later and leave later, or it's a different, it's a different situation because the bus is a commuter bus. It's for people that. Keep, keep business hours, we'll call.
Right, so.
Can we, can we have this conversation between the committees or yourself and the committee as a separate from this, Chris? But I think it's a great point, but let's not do it here.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate the time to bring it up.
Um, thanks, Carol. That's fantastic. Um, Carol, I, I will make one other comment and I'll get it to you. Uh, there is a pre-existing corridor agreement with UDOT for the two forty-eight corridor. Um, on where we've previously agreed for lighted intersections and and an over-under and so forth. So I'll make sure you have that and are aware of it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor.
Um, okay. Thomas, DRC, you you already kind of hinted hinted about it earlier with the discussion with the with claim, but.
Yeah, the only other thing I would ask is that, yeah, we we've worked through the claim recently, and then prior to that, we're uh continuing to work with Nate Brockbank in Deer Springs. And uh those have been our two most recent projects. Uh, as things come up, I'll, I'll keep you guys posted.
Thank you. And Tim?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, so the Infrastructure Committee's been meeting. Um, and we talked about a myriad of things and some of the important things that's come up lately. Uh, the Storm Drain Master Plan uh that we just got recently. Uh, we've also talked about the uh Master Transportation Plan. Um, and uh also some of the shoreline uh ravelling issues. And so those have kind of been the the three uh things that we've been focused on. Uh, along with some minor discussions, uh, you know, through various things around town. Uh, Mayor, we're working on, our next thing will be our infrastructure for the sewer. Tie in along Highway two forty-eight for the uh east half of the city, and we're really excited about that. So. That's a really quick, brief uh report from for the Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, Council, we'll move on to the agenda items. I just thought that with all this work going on, that you guys should hear from each of the groups to have at least a quick update, and then. You can follow up individually uh with the various uh group leaders. To learn more about what they're working on, if any of the things we talked about tonight strikes your uh interest level. Okay, the next thing is discussion and possible. Approval of an ordinance to regarding dark skies. Uh, Thomas, I think you worked on this a little bit with uh with Chris Byer. We want to um. You want to talk about the changes in here?
Sure, I can walk you through a couple of changes that we made uh as a result of the last meeting. Actually, if you don't mind, um scroll down to the second page. Maybe it's the third page. Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe. Uh, keep going, Mayor. Uh, keep going. I have a Word doc that I'm scrolling through, so we gotta keep going. Um, at the last meeting, you'll see some comments in the right at the bottom there. There you go. Um, at the, at the last meeting, there was some discussion. Um. Glenn Seymour out of the Russler HOA had asked a question with regard to Bistro Lights, and so I went back and did some additional research regarding the lights, and so what we've done is. Include a, an exemption for some of those string lights. We've included um an allowance for them with a per bulb maximum output, as well as a. Per string maximum output, much like we've done in all of the other exemptions. And so uh I worked that back and forth a little bit with uh. Glenn and uh pursuant to some research with regard to lumens watts and Bistro lengths, and so we're all learning a little bit about that. And so we did incorporate that exemption. Uh, to allow them on patios, et cetera. Uh, you'll note that the last line there does no, uh does indicate that uh all lights. Uh, are off between midnight and six AM, but that's true throughout the uh, throughout the uh dark skies ordinance. Um, there was a question, oh yeah, Chris and I had discussed, uh, before you leave that section, if you don't mind just going up a little bit. Uh, a discussion with regard to the color temperatures. Keep going down a little. It's at the very end of this one, Mayor, sorry. Um, right there. With regard to color temperature for um sports courts. And so I did a little bit of research, and the question was, can we get. Uh, lighting for sports courts, pickleball courts, et cetera. Can we get them in at three thousand Kelvin as a color temperature, which is, you know, more in the yellow spectrum, not orange, the yellow, but not the. The white-blue, which is up near five thousand Kelvin. So I did a little bit of research, and it looks like most recreational courts are between two and three thousand, so. That does, that would meet our uh dark skies ordinance and yet allow them the uh the use of sports courts for recreational uh purposes. For professional purposes, they do go a little higher, about four thousand um for visibility, television, et cetera, but that's not where we need to land. And so. Uh, Chris and I discussed a little bit, and I think we were comfortable with the three thousand K, which is pretty common throughout the Wasatch back.
And I. Thank you, Thomas.
The final change is a couple of pages down, Mayor. Um, and it was. Based, it was this section with regard to coming into compliance. There you go. And uh there was a discussion early on when we were working through the dark skies ordinance, should we do two, three, or five years? And so. Now that we've been working through this a little bit, we had originally thought that three years was an adequate uh time to get people into compliance. Um, but Chris and I were talking in a little bit more detail, and you know, there have been some new developments that have gone in, and um we thought. Maybe five years would be a more um, a more uh, uh, a more fair allowance for time to come into compliance. And so. I think that um that was a recommendation made. It, it's worth noting that. For the most part, when, if a project goes through DRC Design Review Committee on on the town side. We, we recommend uh and uh require actually dark sky compliant fixtures, you know, downward, the downward uh shining fixtures with. Protection around the lights from a horizontal viewpoint. So generally, I think that we're there, but this is um a more uh lenient allowance, but we think it's appropriate, given what has gone on over the past like fifteen months, and so that was the only other change.
Yeah, I just want to add that was because also for HOAs or uh others who may need more time to budget, you know, to change out some lighting, we wanted to give them enough. Time, because you know lighting is not cheap, and just wanted to recognize that. Because we've had, because this ordinance was, you know, drafted more than a year ago. Bruce, well, uh, what's Bruce's last, I don't know how to pronounce Bruce's last name. Bruce did all of a lot of the work on this. Um, from the Planning Commission, former Planning Commissioner, and. We, you know, a lot of things have been built, and we also want to recognize it could be, you know, there could be some budgeting required for anyone who needs to. Change out some uh non-compliant lighting. We wanted to give them a little more time.
I'm certainly free to answer any questions, but really those were the three primary uh revisions to the document.
I, I do have a question. Um, it is, it's, it regards deer waters. Um, when I come in from Park City in the evening or at night, um, I find their lights, their light bulbs hang below the fixture. And I find them very disconcerting. They're very bright, and since Deer Waters is still under construction. Um, they're not built out. They haven't put their lights in on their new buildings. I wondered if you could contact them. I, I don't know what the process would be. Is they continue to put lights in, maybe they um put in lights that are more acceptable to meeting the dark skies requirement. Because it's the, otherwise they're gonna have to change them all out, I would think. Um, because I don't think they meet the requirements.
Yeah, Carol, they, I know exactly what you're talking about. They don't meet the requirements. The bulbs are, yeah, so they're not.
Bright and they hang down too low.
Exactly. They put the lights on my house, by my garage, don't meet the requirements also, which is. Which is, I'm telling Thomas, that's okay. I never liked them anyway, but, you know, we're, but it, you know, I, I recognize that there are some fixtures that are, are just not going to, aren't going to work. But the Deer Waters one in particular, they are bright and kind of glaring.
Right. So, you know, maybe you could talk to that, to, you know, the developers there and see if, as they go forward, they could make them more compliant to dark skies, so they don't have to change them out. Just a thought.
I'll reach out to them ASAP. That is one, uh, that is one subdivision that we did not review as part of DRC. That preceded us. And so, uh, I'll definitely reach out to Nate and PT and those guys.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
So, uh, problem I have is there's no ordinance associated with dark sky in this package.
Mayor, what, what, what you see would be, those are the sections to the ordinance. That would be.
It's true. We need an enabling, just, uh, with an ordinance number. And I think, let me take a quick look, because I think we had one at one point, but if not, we'll send one.
We have one.
Yeah, so let's just pull that. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch that when I reviewed the packet. Oh, yeah, Cameron said that we, he sent one, so, um, uh, maybe he can resend it to Alicia, who can send it to the council.
Hey, Thomas, um, if we don't vote on this tonight, because we don't have the ordinance in front of us uh, and hasn't been distributed, can be, before the next meeting, if we vote on it, can you just send, um, or distribute any of the areas that are out of compliance? I think like Deer Waters, just so that we know, uh, going into this ordinance, what, what areas you think are significantly? I know we've gone over this, but, um, it sounds like maybe we missed one around Deer Waters as an example for some reason. You know, almost like a, do we have a table of our, our various areas and where you see, where you see we're out of, uh, compliance?
Yeah, I'll work with Tim on that. I know that, uh, Tim and Daniel have done some of the light meter readings. And so, uh, I can see if, uh, we can put that into a table format so that you guys know generally pretty good compliance overall. But, um, I could definitely try to put that.
There's a number of single, there's a, there's a number of single homes that are, um, that have, like Chris talked about, that have, um, issues as well as Russler and Deer Waters.
Just so you know, the ordinance has been sent around. It was in an earlier packet, so.
I have it. I'm about to share it.
Thank you.
Yes, I know it's small. I'm making it there. So this would be the ordinance that we would be voting on if the council is prepared to vote on it tonight. So it's an ordinance enacting Title 10, Chapter 6, Dark Skies Lighting, which contains all the language that we just looked at. Chapter 16, sorry, that we just looked at. Pretty straightforward. So if we're ready to move ahead, I need to know if I can get a motion to, uh, adopt an ordinance enacting Title 10, Chapter 16, Dark Skies Lighting.
Well, I'm, I, I, okay, I thought I'd be able to comment there. Um, I'm not.
I'm sorry, Ralph. I thought you already had.
Uh, well, you know, I haven't seen, you know, I haven't seen this, uh, except on the screen right now. I don't think, I, I personally don't feel comfortable in voting on this, uh, in a positive way until I see that table or, you know, uh, other, other folks had as well. And I don't think we properly shared this to the town beforehand. So I'm willing to wait another month before that comes out, we can properly distribute any other information to the, you know, to the folks that are out of compliance.
Ralph, can I ask you a question?
That's fair.
Comments, is it? Um, I understand we want to know where we are and I think we were expecting to see something in today's meeting about that. But once we get that, I just want to know, are you in favor of, you know, limiting light trespass and all that? And is this really an economic, uh, calculation you need to, um, make based on, you know, where we are today or what's, what's the driver? And I, I would totally respect that because I would like to know as well. I want to know what the results were from the light metering and the, you know, the walk around town to see where we kind of stand.
We, we shared that, we shared the results the last meeting. We did. Told you what the light meter numbers were.
Well, it just seemed like something came up around Deer Waters, which was not discussed. And Thomas just said, excuse me, he, Thomas just said that he did not get to that area. So to me, that's an incomplete set of conclusions or data. Um, so, you know, that's what, that's my concern. If we, if we're dealing on, uh, past, no, and, and to address Chris's point, I feel, yeah, the dark sky, I like, I like it. I think I'm in favor of it. But not without the data and not without properly distributing the ordinance beforehand with the resolution here to the town and having people then being able to read that in, in, in a normal document. I think we've been caught in bad situations in not having, not having material up in front of other people. And I would want to defend something that wasn't available to our town.
That's fair, Ralph.
Those are my two reasons.
All right. I think that's fair. We did not republish this to the community in, in any reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, so the open public part of the meeting, you know, you would certainly, people would then potentially have comments on this because it would be part of the pack. Yeah.
So, Ralph, were you suggesting we move it to September 8th meeting and, you know, have, have this distributed?
Yeah, I think that would be a little bit more appropriate to make sure we have this in the packet, any of the data and that any of the data is distributed to say a Deer Waters development or any of the other developments or any, you know, if we got any data that's negative, we should at least apprise those areas, people, homes beforehand, so they have a chance to comment on this and what they're dealing with. Just to be fair, that's all. I know we've been, I know we've been dealing with this forever, it seems like. So, you know, my, my personal view is I'm for it, Chris, but, um, not in the way this is coming up in this meeting.
So we've been dealing with it forever. So what's another month? So I, I am, I can support that, Ralph. You have great points.
And, and I just want to make sure that, uh, council understands when, uh, Tim and or Daniel have taken meter readings. It's kind of been throughout town, um, generally pretty good compliance. But we know where, um, some lighting is a little bit off when you get closer to some of the, uh, the HOA lighting, et cetera. But I will say this, we won't know every location. We'll just have where we've light meter, uh, where we've done light meter reading. And I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's going to be a number of single-family homes as well as HOAs that will be out of compliance with this. In fact, I would guess that most will have some degree of non-compliance, hence the reasoning for doing this. But I just want to be clear, we won't know every single one because we're, we're probably trying to do, I think Tim is on, but maybe, you know, 10 or 20 light meter readings at a, at a time. It just gives us a sense of where we are. But I also think to, uh, to your point, giving additional time, five years to come into compliance is probably a, a much more fair and equitable way to do it. And so I think that we're trying to get there as best we can.
Yeah, I just think we should be distributing the information beforehand on the next meeting and going out and proactively informing those potential, particularly larger areas that are out of compliance that you're, you know, at least we random sampled, you know, the town and, and maybe pub, put it up on our website so that there is, so this is all public going into the next meeting. And I've also heard some comments from folks who've come to me and said they're, they don't feel that this isn't important enough, um, piece of ordinance resolution to pass. So I've heard, I've heard some clearly negative things about this. I'm in favor of it just because I, I like the dark, I like the, the fact that we're not looking at lights. But I've also heard some other opinions. It's not all one-sided here. So anyway.
We'll take, we'll, we'll do that. We'll get the community. I, I continue to challenge staff to have the content for the meetings available much earlier. Unfortunately, we still don't seem to be able to perform to that level. I have, um, recently issued a message saying that if you don't have it by Tuesday of the same week of the meeting, I'm taking it off the agenda. So we may have nothing on the agenda next month, depending on what we get done. So. Okay. The next one on the agenda is to talk about, we talked last month about water conservation. And I don't know, you, you haven't had it very long and that's, um, our fault indirectly. But Cameron has been really sick with COVID. And as somebody who's had COVID, I understand what it means. And the fact that you can even get out of bed, uh, to do the necessary things you have to do to live is difficult when you have nasty COVID. So we're just getting this in now. Uh, this is a, a proposed, uh, you know, we talked about it again last, last month, um, and talked about and looked at some hours of use and stuff like that. Uh, we do have one comment from the public suggesting that one thing we could do is not, not just restrict hours, but consider changing our rate schedule to drive, because this is all aimed at, um, um, of landscape type water to instead change our, our targets for, um, potable or, you know, domestic water usage by, uh, reducing, you know, having a different set of steps. Because right now I think it's one fee for up to 10,000 gallons, uh, which is, you know, a significant amount of water. If we cut it into two fees at, you know, 5,000 gallons and then 10,000, uh, that might encourage people to, um, be more conservative with their, with their internal water as well. So I throw that out there for consideration.
I read that public, oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I, I'm, I just, so I don't know that this is actually ready for us to sign now as opposed it is for us to review and do some thinking about.
I did read that. I read the public comment and I really liked the idea of that because I think not everybody has to water their landscape. It's an HOA thing. So they don't really have control on that, but they do have control over the amount of water they use in their house. And I think that people should be encouraged to conserve water. And the best way to do it is through their pocketbook. So I did like that public comment and maybe that would be something to look at.
So I, I, I also like the comment, uh, I don't think people will like the actual execution of that, but I'm, we're, we're willing to look at that because our, our, our consumption, or sorry, our water from the wholesaler, which is JSST, is a take or pay limit, we have to offset those costs, whether you use 10,000 gallons or 2,000 gallons. Um, so I'm not, I don't believe we are in a, we would be able to lower the, the, we could lower the target volume, but I don't think we could lower the price. But we'll look at that and, and come back to you on that. Because we can't, we can't be subsidizing the water bills from JSST. So we'll have to think about whether that's actually executable in the, in the way, in the way our contract reads. But we'll work on that. I think it's, I think it's an interesting opportunity for us.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, that's going to be a constraint for sure, the JSST contract. I just want to say that I, I do support taking, um, this is not a drastic, the way it's written, being able to water your landscaping for three days a week is not a drastic measure at all because it seems like it's common sense. So I, you know, as it, as it is, it seems, uh, very reasonable.
Yeah, I think, Chris, I mean, we, we can do this in two phases. We can do the landscape water one next month, for example, if, if everybody's comfortable with the thought process, while we figure out what we can do around, um, inside use water.
Well, my, my, my first, uh, thought goes to the golf course, right? Because they, would they, would, would they need to be applying for, uh, an exception or whatever the language is in that talks about an exception? How does that apply?
The golf courses on a, on a separate watering system, they, they pay, uh, they have their own, they have a meter and I'm getting the meter data from JSST. They've committed to provide that. And we would have to take a look at the usage and, and see how this applies. They, they do a lot of watering during the day, which I think is a shame because I think it's wasteful. But they also don't staff at night. So, uh, it doesn't mean it couldn't be done. It may mean they have to put in some automation. So, uh, so that's what we have to look at, Chris, but that's a great question.
Yeah, I know we want to save water and, and every little bit counts, right? Don't run your sink while you're brushing your teeth, for example. Um, but the big, you know, we also want to deal with the elephant in the room, which is the huge water consumption on the golf course. And are we addressing that or not with this?
Good one.
And, um, to add to the, so I just got a chance to look at this late comment that came in. I think that everyone's referencing and really haven't studied it much. But so there, in, in, you know, Brett usually, Mr. Rutter usually has a lot of great comments. But I do think, you know, in here, he does reference that things like, um, 4,000 gallons is a standard usage and things like that. I think we need to get good data as to what is standard, what is average. Um, you know, not only here, but, you know, with the expectations. So having, having some good data around usage, um, and real data, you know, that's substantiated would be useful for us to, uh, understand better if we get into the, you know, how to conserve water at the household level.
Yeah, and we'd want to be able to measure, right, Ralph? Like you're saying with data, we'd like to know if we implement something that we've.
We have all the data. We just need to get engineering to put it together for you. But we have, we have, you know, we have 600 meter, meet, meet readings a month for several years. So we know what the water usage is. You know, Ryan and his team are working on it, on, is part of our overall water efforts. In general, so we'll, we can certainly share that. So put that together. So we know what people are using. We, we, we have really good, good visibility to that.
Yeah, and, and what I was thinking is taking that data and comparing it against what I would call, um, industry, industry or, you know, residential use standard data. And then saying, are we, you know, starting from that standpoint, are we far off? Are we, you know, are we wasting water in town per household? Um, and, you know, those kinds of things. And then that will lead us to a better position on the financial end as well.
Yeah. And the state has, you know, statewide data that we can, the public record that we can reference for at least the state of Utah. Most states do. Give you, you know, sense for the entire state's usage. A lot of it is irrigation water, as you know. Yeah. Okay, well, we'll come back to that one. The next item, and we're getting close to the end, the next item of interest is the fact that the town. is the fact that the town has officially received notice from the state of Utah that we are officially considering.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could we just go back and do a normal continuation, a vote? It doesn't have to be a roll call vote, but just a vote confirming moving the night skies to next month as well as the drought?
Well, yeah, I didn't think that. Okay, whatever you say, Paul, that's fine. Alright, so I guess I need the council motion to continue the discussion around the possible approval of the ordinance Dark Skies to next month.
So moved.
Thank you, Bob.
Chris second.
Thank you, Chris. In favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, we'll move it to next month. Move, I need to be in motion to move the next discussion regarding the water conservation to next month. Sorry, to move the consideration of possible approval of adopting ordinance 22 dash to be determined regarding water conservation to next month.
I'll, I'll move that. It's Carol.
That Carol?
Yes.
Thanks, Carol. Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you, Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, thank you, Polly, for keeping us.
Thank you.
I'm not an expert in this and that's why you're here. So I was saying that we have, we are now officially a city of the fifth class in the state of Utah, which is fine. But we do not necessarily have to change our name to hideout city. It's not a requirement. You can, you could call yourself the, the beautiful burg of hideout if you wanted to. And so it's more a question, now we have to do some things differently and Jan is working, you know, to understand our implications as far as our reporting requirements and stuff like that. But we don't have to call ourselves hideout city. And so the question for council is, and I, do you want to change the name from town to hideout? Just because we happen to have 1,002 instead of 996 residents on the list. And we're, I'm just looking for input here. Curious of how you feel about that. I mean, it's a branding thing. Do we want, you know, we've, we've got money invested in the town of hideout, websites and signage and what, what the heck? And a change costs money. So I'm curious what the council's feelings are around possibly driving us to change our name at this point. Doesn't mean we can't change it in the future, just curious.
Well, I I'm looking at the logo that's on the packet and it's hideout Utah. And I I like the fact that we're hideout Utah. You know, I've always mentioned that, referred to us as hideout Utah. That's what.
Our, our legal, our legal name at the moment is the town of hideout Utah.
Yeah, well, that's unfortunate. I, I personally don't want to be town of hideout. That's my thought. I want to be hideout Utah. So, but that, that's my thought.
Well, what I, what I don't want to be, I don't know, I don't want to be hideout city.
I like town hideout. I think it's more, it just fits us better right now. City makes us sound a lot bigger and like we have a lot more things. I mean, I just, I think town makes us, makes it sound better. I don't know.
I'll echo Sherry's view. I'm, I'm more, I would lean towards town city. Just doesn't really reflect where we're at, right, quite where we're at.
Just sounds more like home, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I, maybe I'm a little confused because I, I, why do we have to be town of hideout or city of hideout?
Well, for certain legal documents, we have to be registered as what we are, which is the town of hideout Utah. Doesn't mean we use it publicly in, in communications, but there are, but there are things, legal documents particularly, we are, we are recorded as the town of hideout Utah.
So is Park City, the city of Park City, in legal documents? Or is the city of Heber City on legal documents?
I don't know about Heber City, but Park City is Park City Municipal Corporation is its official name.
And since I worked for Heber City, I can tell you that it is Heber City Corporation also.
If I can jump in, this is Cameron. I researched the name change issue and the name is whatever name the town or the municipality sends to the lieutenant governor. And so because the town name was legally set as the town of hideout when it was incorporated, to change from that to anything else would require the town to petition, send a notice to the lieutenant governor's office. Once they approve it, then it's changed. And so we could change the legal name to hideout. And then it would be, you know, that would be the legal name. But until that changed, it would remain what it is now.
So Cameron, that certificate is actually titled hideout. So it, it was town of hideout, but the new certificate says hideout.
I guess I don't know that.
I don't know, I don't know if the state knows that. But my sense is, so I'm not trying to make more work for us guys. So if if we're happy where we are, in, in, you're not, nobody's excited about calling ourselves a city, then we're just going to table this and keep trucking along until such time as we think it's important to do a, a, a marketing change or something else associated with, you know, with a, with a branding campaign.
And let me, I just looked to get at the certificate. The certificate that was sent by the lieutenant governor was a certificate of class change. In it, of course, they do call us hideout, but there's a separate certificate for a name change. So I don't know where that leaves us. And, yeah, we've been, Jan's been looking, I've been looking, Cameron's been looking. Surprising that there's not more about this. I guess I was just kind of expecting that this was a pretty frequent situation. And we haven't, I haven't gotten responses from anyone I reached out to. And I know Jan got pretty limited responses when she reached out. So it does seem like if we do nothing, then we're still the town of hideout.
Which is fine by me. I do not want to be the mayor of a city.
Well, you are.
For the next.
Well.
I am.
You are a city, you just.
Yeah.
Might not be.
So I'm the mayor, so I guess I am.
Yeah.
That's humbling. Thanks, Polly. Okay, I don't want to spend any more time on this. It was simply a discussion item. So you guys can think about it and let Jan know your thoughts. If you've got anything different, then just leave it alone for now. I'm okay with leaving it alone for now and we're not forced to do it. As Cameron said, we're not forced to do anything different.
Well, plus it was a big announcement. I mean, the fact that we met, went from town to city of the fifth class. I mean, isn't that a milestone?
Milestone of, of work for the, for the administration team.
Well, it, it does change, you know, what you have to do, right? And talk, we, you've got to move in this direction. We've moved in this direction already. So.
Yeah, I mean.
You know.
Alicia's title will change, the, the financial accounting changes. There's a few things that go on like that. But as far as our forward-facing to the community, I don't see any need to get all up and make a big deal out of it. Part of growth. And the next, the next step is 10,000. So we're going to be here for a while.
Let's hope so. Not sure if I want to be over.
Let's, let's hope so. Unless we build a whole bunch of higher.
Exactly. Or we could, we're successful with three annexations or something.
Okay. I just, we'll, let's move on. And the last thing I wanted to share with, with, with you guys is the new, the new numbers for animal control. We are, it's just budgeted. I just wanted to take a few moments to y'all see how animal control costs get shared. It's basically population-based in, against 100% of their budget for the people. These are the other, other parts of, of the county that take place in, take, take part in animal control. We are 2.85% of their budget comes out to about 10 grand a year. I, I send reports regularly so you know that they're, they're doing what they're doing. They're available to our community when needed. And we've, and we have called them from, on more than one occasion. So I think the last time we, when we first set, signed up for this, we all agree that this was a necessary service for the, for the community. And I personally support keeping it in place. Any thoughts?
I think, I think it's been good that we've had animal control and I'm just, it's interesting to see how much it actually costs.
Anyone else?
I think we need it. How, how we deal with it is, you know, another question. But it seems, you know, what are we paying here? $10,275? Am I reading this correctly, Mayor?
Yeah, we sent out, yeah, basically, you know, 900 bucks a month.
Yeah.
A little less. $833 a month. It's not a budget breaker by any means. And I think it's a necessary service. And it's in the budget. So unless someone thinks that we should start our own animal control department, I think we probably either need, the decision is either just keep it or take the risk. And I'm recommending it stay.
Yeah, so we're just talking about keeping it for the next year, right? The budget already.
Yeah, yeah, it's a yearly, it's a yearly renewal.
Yep. I, I personally think we should keep it. I mean, we've used it in the past year. We've had issues.
Oh, yes, we have.
So I, I think we should keep it and just continue until such time comes, if it ever comes, that we don't need the service.
Yeah, keep it.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Thank you all for that. I, I thought you would come up there, but I wanted to keep you informed. So we are now at the time to make a decision and there is no, Polly, there's nothing foreclosed, right?
No.
From a legal perspective?
Hmm, no. Nothing. No. I mean, I've been trying to keep you updated, so I don't think, unless somebody wants to.
So if not, I would love to have a motion to adjourn the meeting and see you all tomorrow night at the party.
Awesome move.
One second.
Thank you, Ralph. Is that, who was that, please?
Sherry.
Sherry. Sorry, guys. I, I know that you, that your names come up when you're talking and all, but I don't see them because I'm making notes on my pad. So that's why I'm doing it by ear only. So I apologize if I'm not recognizing your voice through my little 12-cent speakers here. Okay. Chris, shall we close?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Thank you, Carol. Bob?
Yes.
Ralph?
Definitely, yes.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. Appreciate all you do for the town and we'll talk to you next month.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.